Hi, Chris.
Hey there.
How are you?
I'm good, Amelia. How about yourself?
All right, another day. Well, you know, I always feel like I come right at time and then we just get started.
Now, and starting. Jeremiah, we're live.
All right, welcome everyone. We are, we can be ending our recess of the school names advisory committee from our meeting two weeks ago. We are continuing basically exactly where we left off in our process. And so I do want to acknowledge that we are on loanee around the Jewish land before, as we continue with our, as we return from our recess, we are still where we were at the start of the meeting two weeks ago. So we are, we have finished going through the comprehensive high schools, the high schools, and now we're at the K eight schools. Is that correct? Yes. So just for those who may be tuning in for the first time, just a reminder that we are, there will be no public comment today. We had a public comment at the last meeting. And we're just continuing exactly where we left off because we ran out of time at our last meeting. We are continuing down the list of schools and we're just acknowledging if they meet our criteria for their name to be changed. That the committee had established and is in our notes. If you look on our website, the list of criteria and guiding principles are there. And so I'm asking each committee member, as we go through each name, anyone can share out if that name meets our criteria for the name to be changed or not. It's a simple yes or no. And then maybe one fact or one piece of evidence that shows that they're on the list. And then we'll consent on that and then keep it moving. That sound, and if there's any discussion, we'll put a question mark and then return to it later on. Does that sound good, good to continue our process? All right, awesome.
Hey Jeremiah, can I move that we approve the meetings notes from last time? Do we want to?
This is still the same meeting. So the minutes are still the same.
Okay.
Yeah. Like we're just literally is like time froze and we're, we're starting again.
We'll prove those as one, one extra.
As one, one set of minutes.
Okay.
One, one recess. That's what I've been telling my students, one recess. Anyway. Okay, so we are at Buena Vista Horseman Alternative. Are there any concerns about Buena Vista Horseman? Do they meet criteria? Sorry. Does Buena Vista Horseman meet our criteria?
Can you share the screen, the lift?
Sorry. Yes, I can. Share screen.
Hi.
Okay. Can everyone see that? Is that a good, is it at a good size? To be visual. Okay, I can only see some people. Okay, awesome. All right. Any concerns about Buena Vista Horseman? Do they meet our criteria? Mari?
So I did some research, but so Buena Vista, that name I saw, like it doesn't meet the criteria at all. That came from basically about the first Spanish immersion elementary school class in San Francisco. But Horseman was a little bit more just in terms of the, I guess, the foundation of public education in general in the US. In terms of racism, in terms of boarding schools, in terms of law, that I felt like I needed more research specifically how Horseman was connected. So I feel like at this time, I can't confirm or deny.
Okay, so, so no.
I put more research needed for at least Horseman. Buena Vista, no.
For any, for the public and anyone on the committee, if there's any no's and research comes up later on during our process, feel free to bring that to the, to the group.
I just, did anybody else get anything else on Horseman?
I didn't see any other hands on that.
Okay.
Okay, Bessie Carmichael.
No, it was named after a teacher who actually specifically helped that school.
Creative Arts Charter.
No.
Let's just strike the charter part. No, just kidding. Lawton, Alternative K eight.
Um, so yeah, this would meet criteria.
Okay, can you give us one rationale, please?
Yeah, so this actually is a huge, I can just read what I wrote. Waged war on behalf of the US Army responsible for the kidnapping of Geronimo and 27 other Apache people who all died as US prisoners of war after they were kidnapped on their own stolen lands. Their crime that they were charged is that they wanted to be left alone and they wanted to be free. Also, they're a huge part of colonizing the Philippines and many white Americans at the time actually did not support the colonization of Philippines like Mark Twain. So two different colonial eras. So it does meet criteria.
Okay, is there, does everyone consent to that? Is that how we were doing it? It sounds good. Okay, great. Okay, Claire Lilienthal?
All I got was that they were the president of the SF School Board from 1961 to 1967. I need to find out more information about the policies that they supported while they were the president of the SF School Board because I don't know what they supported. They didn't. Did anybody find out anything about the policies that they supported during that time?
Okay, so you know, so that's no. Madison Campus.
Yes, it meets criteria. James Madison was the slave owner who owned a plantation and there's several other things, but I'm just good. That's one thing you need to know.
Okay.
You can read anything.
Everyone agrees with that?
Yes.
Recognizes that. All right. Winfield Scott?
Yeah, there's a whole paragraph about him and I can read parts of the paragraph. So basically Winfield Scott was a US military commander. President Jackson at the time ordered Winfield Scott to personally take command of operations against the Seminole Nation. So he fought against a native indigenous tribe fighting for their own land and their own sovereignty. And so he did that. He campaigned. He also was ordered to go down against a Muskogee uprising, it said, in the Creek War of 1836. I mean, there's lots of Indian removal.
Any, any, any blocking concerns around that?
And it just gets worse.
I have, I have, I have, yeah. We're, we're, I don't know if someone who's acting as a member of the military on behalf of a government where they're carrying out their duty should, falls into the category of our criteria. I think we, I mean, I, I'm not going to contest that the things were done, but he's not acting under his own will. He's acting under the authority of the US government. So is that fair?
Doug, I believe we withheld for all the participants in the many wars who were just following orders. In general, people are responsible for their own behavior regardless of who orders it. And so we hold people accountable based on whatever, whatever they did, based on their choices to participate in that. Because with any war and any hunt, there's always conscientious objectors and there's always people who choose not to fight or pass.
So we're evaluating him as an individual, not as a officer of the US government.
Did you read what I wrote in the article and the thing? Because it says in there that actually his own associates who I'm actually trying to dissuade him from taking command, what they viewed as a moral mission, but he actually accepted these orders and he decided to still pursue it anyways. Even though his own colleagues were like, don't do it, was like, I'm going to. And that's in the notes. So he was an active and willing participant.
But as far as our guiding principles go, I think it is, I think it is perfectly reasonable to hold people accountable for what they do and not whole institutions as they were. Like, we're not saying if you are part of US government, you're bad. We're saying if you made decisions that contributed to the oppression of people, genocide or anything like that, then you're, you will be held accountable in this way. This is like, they're dead, so there's not really any accountability. Really removing their name. So in this regard. So Doug, does that answer your concern?
Well, I'm glad we discussed it. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there are no blocking concerns, I'm going to go with yes. Well, and if it's got Paul Revere?
Should I say what I wrote?
Well, can you say how it meets our criteria?
Yes.
What you wrote means, okay, please tell us how.
Repeat a settler colonial history that includes illegally stealing of indigenous homeland, supported and participated in theft of indigenous lands from native nations without consent.
Okay, so far as I know, Paul Revere, from my research, Paul Revere did not participate in that. He was like a silversmith. Like in his, he did not participate in the taking of people's land. He was a, like a merchant type person. Like that, that, that was the, he wasn't there at the beginning or start of any of that. He wasn't involved in any treaties or breaking of treaties or going out and breaking any people. His claim to fame, which wasn't even most of his work, was just to say that we were being invaded by the British.
It, it was, it's not more about him personally, but more about the, the whole storyline. Like, because like how you said, like.
I understand, but our, our criteria is not storyline. Our criteria are what did he do as an individual to contribute to this madness that we've, that we've been dealing with and under for a long time. And so through oppression, genocide are guiding principles. If it helps for us to review, maybe it'll help for us to review our guiding principles.
Review that one.
Yeah, so that everybody and also for the public, so they can know what those are. Chris, do you have those handy?
Yep, let me bring them up.
Great. And then I'll stop sharing screen if you want to go ahead and share that and then we'll read through it.
Yep, sorry, here.
Chris, is that you? I'm going to mute every, everybody for now.
Was that me? I'm sorry.
I don't think that was you. It's okay.
Is it sharing anything? Jeremiah, you're on mute. Can you see it?
No, we can just see your drive. We can no longer see the document because you clicked out of the window. I recommend opening up the guiding principles and pulling that page off of your other, that tab off of the others and then sharing your screen. Because right now you're sharing Safari or whatever, Chrome.
Okay, sorry.
So go ahead and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Try it one more time.
Um, I just found something right now. Paul Revere was actually commander of the artillery against the, with the, with the Penobscot, what they call expedition, which is basically been one of, well, white people used to say like one of their colonizing. Basically to like take over land with Penobscot people. I could share the link right now.
Okay, please share that link. Okay, let's look at our guiding principles. So for identifying school names to be changed, the committee will use any of the following criteria. They will seek to change the names of schools that are named for anyone directly involved in the colonization of people. Slave owners or participants in enslavement, perpetrators of genocide or slavery, those who exploit workers or people, those who directly oppress or abuse women, children, queer or transgender people. Those connected to any human rights or environmental abuses, and those who are known races and are white supremacist and/or espouse racist beliefs. Okay, Chris, you can stop sharing so we can go back to, we can go back to our list. So how?
Then, yes, so he was directly connected to the colonization of the Penobscot Nation.
Okay, can you share that link?
I put inside the, I don't, I can't put anything in chat, so I put it in the thing.
You put it in the what?
The chart thing. We have the school name research thing that we knew. It's in there right now.
Okay, I did a lot of research and I did not come across that.
I found it on history.com, which is pretty credible.
Okay.
It's the one who owns the history channel. Have a lot of resources.
Any, any blocking concerns around that? Okay, seen.
Can you clear, can you clarify a little bit of the, the connection between a military campaign and the colonization? I mean, I, I can see it, but could you, could you talk a little bit more about that? So we have Scott and Lawton and Paul Revere, who were out on military campaigns against a variety of Native American tribes or the Philippines.
Well, that would be sufficient, that would be sufficient in and of itself because they're fighting for people who are fighting for self-determination on their own land. So they.
But is that one of our principles? Which principle is that?
Under colonization. That's what colonization is, taking up indigenous land. That's a colonization. But I wasn't sure, did you, can you describe, I just didn't understand. He was a part of a unit that went and basically cleared land and cleared people off that way.
Specifically with the Penobscots.
Okay. The Penobscots group?
Penobscot Nation, Native American. They're, they still exist. They're mainly in the state of Maine. And actually Louis O'Kalexis was the first person of color in Major League Baseball was Penobscot Indian.
Oh, cool.
Just so everyone knows, a little bit of Penobscot history.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, so back to our doc, which I need to go back and share again. So everyone can see. Give me a moment. Okay, so Paul Revere participated in colonization. So we're going to say yes. All right. Rooftop alternative. Make sure I can see everyone. Concerns about rooftop, seen none. Twin Peaks.
Excuse me, may I speak?
Sure.
Okay. I was really glad to read the letters that had come in. I appreciate all the people who have taken the time to send in letters. And I noticed that some people, namely someone from downtown camp school said that they would, it was a teacher from downtown, said that they would like to have a name that wasn't just downtown, something that was something that would inspire them. That student body could come up with a name that they really liked that could inspire them. And so I'm hoping that after we go through this process that we, that we let the community know that, because we haven't gotten to that yet, where we devise a process for the communities of every school to give their voice, you know, because the, the way we're going now, you know, it's kind of a missionary attitude where we're telling the schools, okay, you, we, we, we think that this name should be eliminated or this name should not be eliminated. And it's really, it should, it should come from the community as well. You know, the community needs to have a voice whether, so an example. That someone from the teachers over at downtown has suggested that they have a chance to have a different, more inspirational name for their school. And when you have names that are like rooftop, alternative, or Twin Peaks campus, or just places. I hope that we will come to a consensus to give it opportunity for the communities of every school to, to let us know if they want a name change. Because just because their name wasn't, they are not named after Winfield Scott. But if they just have something like rooftop, it might be that the people have a, a name that they really would be happy to have and that they would, that would bring joy to the, to the student body and to the faculty. And so I hope that we will make place in the near future to create a process for the community to let their voices be heard and that where they, within their community could come to a consensus. Because among the other letters that we received was somebody referring to an online petition over at Balboa School that had 25,000 signatures on it, asking for that school name to be changed. And we haven't seen that petition, but if, if it was, if it's out there, then it would, it would be appropriate to have it come forth now and have us see it. And so we know that in fact, that community wants that name changed. So just, when we're looking at these, these rooftop Twin Peaks, I would like to bring this up. That in the near future, I propose that we create a process for each school to let, to have a consultation amongst themselves between the faculty and the students body. And where they, they come to, to, to a decision if they want a name change. And perhaps if some of them, like the, the teachers from Jay Sarah, they already have somebody. And there, there were, among the letters, there were different schools that already had names that they were very interested in having their school changed to. And so we need to listen to those. Press themselves. And I urge the, anybody out there who wants to let us, to send us a letter. If you, if you have a strong feeling, so that can be part of the record going forward, so that in the near future, we create a process. Let us know what they want. Thank you.
Thanks, Tomasita. So just to be clear for everyone, that would be actually beyond the purview of our work. The district already has a process for schools who are interested. This is specifically to redress the names that are, that the board has deemed sort of harmful or contributed to a somewhat of a hostile environment in terms of students' mental, emotional psyche of being, of seeing these names that have done harm to them or their communities. The more, like, I'm interested in changing people have, it's on the, there's a process for that. It's, it's the one that's referred to in the resolution as notwithstanding that process. That process is still in place. And communities can still participate in that separate from our process. Our process was a way of engaging the specifically harmful names and, and making those changes and recommendations. Okay. My, oh, yes, Mary?
Yeah, just kind of in alignment with what Tomasita said, but not exactly. I think we need to have either a filter or a way of categorizing those emails because in reading through them, there were invitations like to be a part of a committee that exists at the school in some of their discussions. And also there was media, media requests for people to give feedback and whatnot. So at some point, I think we should discuss, you're absolutely right. Some of those commentaries will be part of the ongoing process when we get to that point. But there are more immediate requests for participants from our committee to be a part of another group and whether or not we should or shouldn't. That could be part of the discussion, but also the fact there are a lot of media requests that come in on that. There was two or three of them.
As far as media request goes, that generally falls to the facilitators to address. And so Mary, that's Mary, Adam and myself. We can discuss it. If I, if anyone else is like, please send the media my way, please let us know. We're happy to include you in that. And, but we can talk about that in our next steps. Right now, like, it's this part of our agenda.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you all for being so thoughtful and reading through the emails and giving and sharing their feedback and what insights you have with that. We are super grateful. Okay, let's continue with our school names. We're at Maeda Campus. Anyone? Mari?
I couldn't figure out what it meant or where that came from or anything because they didn't write about it. And since it's just a campus name and it wasn't like a first and last, it's kind of just a big question mark. We would have.
So I'm going to put a question mark there because we have no information on it. San Francisco Community, K eight.
Doesn't meet criteria.
Okay, doesn't meet criteria. Thomas Edison Charter Academy.
It meets criteria.
How does it meet criteria?
Okay, this is what I found out. Here we go. Because this is what I wrote. Thomas Edison had a fondness for electrocuting animals and he did a whole thing of electrocuting animals, including at the time, top see the elephant. He was a well-loved circus elephant during that time. And I put all the links in there. And so.
So what criteria would that mean?
Can you show me the criteria again?
Sure. Chris, can you do that? Sorry. I, I do not see, I didn't, okay, go ahead.
I would say it's those connected to environmental abuses.
I would not consider that an environmental abuse. We could debate that. So, but we don't have to debate it now. You can just put a question mark there and come back to it. That's okay with everybody? I think, yeah, we can look at that more closely.
When we had talked about the criteria, hadn't we said that it, I don't, it used, we did say. But I don't see it here, but we had, we had.
We had discussed it and we had taken it out because some of us did not, did not consent to that. This is what we had consensus around.
And Jeremiah, it's, it's a yes or no. We came up with last time, so question marks aren't okay.
Question marks are okay to come back to it next time. Because we're not going to debate it now. So we don't want to slow down our process. We push it to the bottom of the list and we'll come back to it at the end. Okay, Chris, you can stop sharing. Alice Fang Yu?
No.
Is that okay with everybody? I'm not going to look, any blocking concerns around a no for Alice Fang Yu? Okay. Alamo?
Yes.
Okay.
It's been used as an anti-Mexican rallying cry. I wrote, I put all the links in the.
Okay, I did see that.
School names.
Any blocking concerns around that? Okay, seen that. Avarado?
Spanish colonizer who stole land and resources from native people.
Any blocking concerns around that?
receiving a yes meets criteria?
Yes, okay. Argon?
Um, so this is what I wrote down. I wrote down its name after, well, because I'm, I'm going to talk through this one a little bit because this is interesting.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so this one is named after the World War One Battle of the Argon Forest. And I put a link in there from military.com, which is a, like, if you're a veteran, a lot of veterans read this or whatever. But it, during the World War Two, during, because of this battle and lots of other of it, they had separate, but equal colored battalions and stuff for people of color. So that's the part where I could see where it could be like, I don't know. I would put a question mark.
So the Alamo, the name Alamo is.
Alamo is different.
No, not Alamo. Argon is just named after a forest.
It's named after the specific battle of the Argon Forest in World War One, which had separate but equal, several equal colored battalions for people, basically for black soldiers and other people of color.
Okay, but it's not named after the military. It's not like the arm, US Army.
It's named after that specific battle that happened in World War Two.
And was that battle, a battle about colonization? No. Was that a battle about genocide?
That's why I put a question. That's why I put a question mark.
It was a turning point in World War One, um, involving the French. The Germans and the Americans were supporting that offensive that pushed the Germans back and um, eventually broke their supply lines.
Okay, but the name Argon itself. It's not Argon Battle School, as far as I know.
No, it's a it's a national forest.
It's a national forest, right? Okay, so I would say that does not meet criteria.
Okay, that's what I said I wanna talk about a little bit.
But if it was Argon Battle School, then we could talk about it. Then we could definitely talk about it.
Okay, next one, Bryant. I got some stuff for you.
All right, Bryant. Now you only need one, but go ahead.
Well, he got a lot. He did a lot of stuff. This is Edwin Bryant. And Edwin Bryant, he wrote a lot of things, so he wrote these things down, but he did a lot of editorials. Um, I guess if there's a period of time um, in US history where there was what they called. Like anti-Catholicism, right? So primarily against a lot of our like Irish immigrants and like folks who are Catholic, but. I don't know, it's very interesting. Anyway, so he did a lot of anti-Catholicism. Um, and then he also did a series of racist attacks against the then Vice President Johnson. Because Johnson, as it's quoted in the source that I found, had a black common law wife, which I did not really like that. Because they had mixed-race daughters. Um, he also, yeah, they, I don't know, pick one of.
I think the religious persecution is is pretty sufficient.
And he wrote all this down. He wrote this all down, like it's very, but you could read what he wrote and then like going after like. You know, talking smack about mixed-race people and black people and.
Are any blocking concerns around Bryant coming down? Seeing that, okay. Curses. I lost my window. There we go. Is is my window still being shared? Okay, so.
I just see everybody.
Great. Let me just share my screen. All right, Bryant is a yes. George Washington Carver. Any blocking concerns? I don't think there was anything negative there. Nice, can't see everyone, okay. Uh, so we're no, any blocking concerns around it being no? Caesar Chavez? No, Johnny Hau Chin? No. Chinese Emergent School at the Avala? No, Clarendon? Marty? You're muted, Marty.
I'm trying to open them cuz when you open up your screen, then it takes away my screen, so then I have to.
Sorry, you gotta hit escape and then.
I did. Okay, so this is what I found out about with Clarendon. Okay, so wait, hold on, I have to. So um, I don't know, I'm getting, I'm just gonna read it out loud and then we can all talk about it.
No, I got you, I got you. Go ahead, go ahead. No, no, I'm just.
Okay, so it's um, the Clarendon Elementary School or whatever. Its origins can be traced to a county in South Carolina. Um, one of the thirteen colonies named for Edward Hyde Earl of Clarendon, who was an English politician. Clarendon was impeached by the House of Commons for blatant violations of the Hebeus Corpus, whatever. For having sent prisoners out of England to places like New Jersey and holding them there without benefit of trial. So I thought in terms of, this is where it's interesting cuz I thought, well, somebody would hold someone without a due process, like incarcerate them? And can we go back to the criteria? I didn't see anything about mass incarceration.
But it's oppression. It falls under oppression.
So there you go. So then I would, for me, I would say, holding people. Trial is a, that's, yeah.
So that means criteria. Any block concerns around that meeting criteria? Okay, seeing none. Japanese bilingual bicultural program at Clarendon. Just the at Clarendon part, I assume, so that will be a automatic, uh, yes. The. Cleveland Elementary School?
So all I got was that, wait, where are you on? All I got that Cleveland was a member of the Board of Education. It was.
So, yeah, he actually, I found out. Cleveland's cool story. Cleveland, um, Cleveland had a cool story because during the. Uh, when they were discrim, when the Board of Education wholeheartedly went after segregation and keeping the Chinese. And Asians out of white schools, he was one of the school board members who was in the minority at the time, who said. Uh, all kids should be able to go to school together. And that was the purpose of school was to educate people. And so and everyone should have access to it. He was one of the rare, he was the dissenting voice on the Board of Education. Even though the majority of the board decided to segregate schools and or keep maintain segregation in schools. So he would be a no. Um, any, any, any blocking concerns around him being a no? And there was a typo in the school names, not cuz they had it as Chaz, but it's actually Charles. Okay, Dr. William Cobb? Marty? We can't hear you, you're muted.
I just wanna say who who he was cuz I thought it's pretty dope when I found out. He supported district policy to integrate schools and he was the first African-American principal and assistant superintendent chair of our school district. So it definitely doesn't meet criteria, but I thought we should give him a shout out while we're on here.
Dr. Charles Drew?
Um, he does not meet criteria. He was an African-American physician who actually helped start blood banks and stuff and plasma.
El Dorado?
That does meet criteria. Okay, hold on, let me, okay, sorry, it's really hard with the dual. Okay, so um, El Dorado, so the it's a Spanish colonial. So this is a Spanish word first or whatever, but basically El Dorado is a colonizer myth. Um, it's a myth that is still told to kids through like. So for example, there's a DreamWorks movie called The Road to El Dorado. It was a colonizer myth that this was around the Spanish, like. If you go to, you know, there's this road to El Dorado and you'll find all this gold and blah blah blah. And it was one of the things that basically, one of the reasons why the Spanish. Did colonize, so it was, it's basically, as it went from a person to a place, the empire that the Spanish kept trying. Yeah, they kept trying to colonize this area.
In hopes of finding it.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, any blocking concerns?
Yeah, it's not a person. Criteria are are don't really have room for things that are not people.
I don't know.
If it's a myth that supports the colonization of.
I I think it would be, it would it would sort of also similarly tie into. What we had decided around mission and what we had decided around.
Presidio.
Presidio.
But it, but our guidelines are we will seek to change the names of schools that are named for anyone, owners, perpetuators, those, those, those and those. So that's all people. There's no room for, we don't have.
Those don't, those are not just people, Doug.
Those who are directly, the El Dorado is not a who. It's a concept. Those connected with any human rights abuses, that's not a concept or a myth. And those who are known racist, that's not a concept or myth. I don't see, I don't see it fitting in those uh, in our criteria.
Can you read the criteria around colonization?
Um, anyone directly involved in the colonization of people.
Okay, so you're saying that does not apply to an idea?
Yeah, I said that our criteria do not have room for ideas. Same as rooftop. It falls under the same reason we're not looking at rooftop or downtown.
I would be.
I would disagree. I would disagree with that.
If we had a manifest destiny high school, I would be very.
Then we should upgrade our, then we should update the guidelines, right? I mean, but the guidelines don't account for concepts or ideas. That's, it's specifically written for people.
I don't, I don't think it was specifically written for people. Um, I think. I understand, I understand if that reads. Uh, so because we have a wonderful, uh, so let's put a question mark and come back to it. And and keep going through our list and then we'll come back to this one specifically. All right. All right, Diane Feinstein?
Okay, I have something. So um, so Manila Town, um, which now people know of, but at one time people didn't remember. Was, there was a hotel in Manila Town called the International Hotel. And for a while, um, Chinese and Filipino elders, who was mainly all elders, was the SRO. And a Filipino neighbor here in San Francisco, uh, were trying to lead off an eviction. Um, and there were definitely processes moving forward, but she eventually in the end. Ordered and ordered the attack of police dogs and having police go there and is responsible for the. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so she's responsible for that.
The attack, she ordered the attack of police dogs?
She ordered the attack of police officers going in forcefully removing Chinese and Filipino elders after they decided not to leave. She made that call.
Okay, that that's if they're being evicted. If they're being evicted, that is, that is their, that is their job. Like that's what sheriffs do, is sheriffs go in, they evict people when like they, the ones who go in and evict people when they get evicted. Like that's part of our law currently, like that's not, doesn't, evicting people is not considered a crime against humanity as unpopular as it is.
I would say that gentrification is.
A gentrification is not. Gentrification is the standard for planning, is unfortunately the standard of planning. In the United States and in that industry. So I don't think that would apply to Diane Feinstein. I don't think our criteria would apply to Diane Feinstein. As much as people didn't like it or her decision was unpopular, uh, it wasn't. Yeah, I had, I don't see as a, unless she's known to be espousing racist beliefs, uh, and.
Will you put a question mark then and come back to it then, for at least right now?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Doesn't hurt. Okay, uh. Leonard R. Flynn? Oh, then I'm sorry, did anybody else have anything to contribute to that conversation? Noah?
I was just curious, have we heard from the Filipino community about? This particular issue?
I'm actually half Filipino.
There you go.
Does that help you? Or no? My name is Marty Posse for a reason.
I mean, he was just a question, though. I don't think, I don't think we should assume where folks are either.
No, no, I know, I'm just letting, I I grew up with this story knowing it and it's people, it's. Heavily talked about in the Filipino activist community in San Francisco.
It's a big part of, it's a big part of San Francisco history.
Like a lot of people know it, it's it's very like, there's no hiding it. I didn't have to like uncover. I've known it for like decades.
Right, but unpopular political positions, uh, when it, in terms of like, like eviction is the, like wherever our standards were at that time. Like, that is not, um, I mean, I'm pretty sure she wasn't down there doing it either, but uh, her. She wouldn't meet criteria.
Well, I guess it just makes me wonder, so you know, Justin Herman, for example, the architect of redevelopment in SF, like.
Yes.
So that was rephrased, uh, sorry, that that name, Justin Herman Plaza was taken away. Um, is there like a corollary here?
Uh, well, that was, why was, I don't, I don't remember that debate, but why was it taken away other than?
Well, I mean.
Popular, people wanted to name it something else.
Justin Herman was the architect of redevelopment of the Fillmore and the destruction of that neighborhood. So by the same token is the destruction of Manila Town kind of enough.
It wasn't. It was an eviction? Uh, it's a question mark. I think it's the eviction, it was different. Like, so they were protesting and so to stay. Like after they had already legally been removed in the order having it, as much as any of that's legal.
I will say the Fall Eye Hotel is what.
It's a popular story. Yeah, it's a very popular story.
Very well documented.
Exactly, exactly. Uh, okay, so uh, Marty wants to do more research. We can leave it at that for now. Uh, Leonard R. Flynn?
I didn't find anything.
Okay, did anyone else find anything on Leonard R. Flynn? Do you know who he is? Oh, did I get out from somewhere? Okay, I don't see any, any concerns that we're gonna go to know. Garfield? Marty? You're muted?
Hey, I'm here, oh man, he he's got one of the longest paragraphs. Um, well, basically it's connected to colonization and theft of native lands. I mean, do you want me to read?
Please, please don't. Any, uh. Any, any uh, blocking concerns around that? Okay, so we're gonna say yes to Garfield. Glen Park? I think it's actually related to like a Glen, like, you know, like Between Valleys, Glens, that kind of thing. Grattan?
So Grattan is named after William Henry Gotten, Gratchen or whatever, who. Was part of the theft of unceded native land in the state of California.
Okay, so you're saying that's a yes?
Yeah.
Any blocking concerns around that? Okay, seeing none. Guadalupe Elementary?
This name has a very interesting background. You would think it's, okay, I think it's, people would think because there's a, um, like people would connect it to, I guess Catholicism and maybe like. Um, Guadalupe or whatever, but um, what I read in the, oh, here, I have to find. Maybe someone else could read it out, but it's in the little booklet they gave it us, but it's not specific to. I lost my place. Someone else can read it? Which way? Can someone else read it? I can't, I lost my place. I don't know.
Does anyone else have the document open and is able to read, read from it?
Okay, wait. I have to retype it. I'm sorry.
You can just click undo.
Now my computer's frozen. Can we just put a question mark for now and then come back to it at the end cuz I don't know why, why my computer's frozen?
Okay, sure. Uh, okay, Red Heart, no one else has the document open?
Are you just looking for the one that has the highlights, the yellow highlights in it?
No, the document they gave us, the SFUSD gave us. It's so why it's called Guadalupe and it's not because of the saints.
No, they, I have it open. It says the valley is called Canyada de Guadalupe, La Visitación y Rodeo Viejo. Um, so it was given as a land grant to Governor Juan Alvarado, gave a Mexican land grant. To Jacob Lee, so rancher, the property included three separate valleys of the region named Guadalupe Visitation and Old Rodeo. As mentioned above, the name reflects geographical features of the region. The origin of the name came from the Villa de Guadalupe Hilda, which used to be a separate town, but is now part of Mexico City. And the site of the apparition of Our Lady of Guadalupe in fifteen thirty-one.
Yeah, so I didn't hear anything in that that would make it meet criteria.
No, I just thought it was interesting to point out it wasn't about Catholicism.
Okay. Thanks, Marty. Red Heart Elementary, Red Heart Elementary Biography? I don't think the name of the school is Biography. I think that's a typo.
It's definitely a typo.
Okay, Bret Hart? Okay, no concerns about Bret Hart? So we're gonna bracket as a no. Uh, Hillcrest Elementary?
The reason why it says Bret Hart Elementary Biography cuz when I typed in, someone typed the word biography or whatever, it comes up with the link. To click on Bret Hart. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay, so who is, but does he meet Jack Wright's criteria or not?
I didn't look him up. I just know he's an American writer. That's all I got.
Okay.
I didn't get to do more about him.
Okay, so no for now. Uh, Hillcrest Elementary? Okay, no. Dolores Huerta? I think she's pretty well known. No. Jefferson Elementary?
Slave owner.
Okay, any block concerns around Tommy? Fun fact, I went to his university. Francis Gottke?
He was a slave owner and he wrote a pro-slavery verse in the National Anthem.
Any blocking concerns around Francis Gottke? Okay, see none. Thomas Starking? Not biography, that's not the name of the school.
I didn't get to research him, I'm sorry, that was one of the few, did anybody else get to?
Did anyone get to research him? Because I want to put a no unless we know for sure.
I can't tell you no or yes.
Okay, did anyone research that on the committee? Okay, see none, so I'm gonna mark it as a question mark for us to come back to.
Yep.
Okay, Lafayette?
I didn't research him at all. I didn't get, sorry, it's hard to go through over 200 school names.
I understand, does that mean we are at the extent of our, like, have we reached the limit of our, what we've done so far? As far as research, or is there more to, more to further down?
I mean, if you wanted to skip over to Frank McCoppin, I did research on him, McKinley I did research.
So let's just keep going, okay, so, because if we didn't do research, we didn't do our due diligence, we still have to do that, so I'm not gonna...
I think some, the next few, though, will have to put a question mark, because I didn't, well, unless someone else got it.
Right, so did anyone else research Lafayette? No, okay.
I do think...
Anyone research Lake Shore?
It's just a name, like Lake Shore, like Lakeview, or I didn't think to really...
Okay, did anyone research Lake Shore is my question? Okay, so... Gordon J. Lau? I believe that was named after the Lau case, I definitely have read about that, I think that's, that's still good, so that's a no. Edwin Anita Lee Newcomers School? No. I'm sorry, is there consensus around any blocking concerns around Edwin and Anita Lee? See none, any Black Longfellow?
I didn't get to do research, did anybody do research on Longfellow?
Assuming we're talking about Henry Wasworth Longfellow, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't find any blocking concerns.
Okay, so he's a no. Is there any consensus around, around that? Any blocking concerns around Longfellow?
I have to go downstairs and pick up my grocery delivery, we won't have groceries, so, and I'm gonna be gone for the next two minutes, can someone take over and read my notes for Frank McCoppin, McKinley, and Malcolm X? Malcolm X is like, doesn't meet criteria, so someone actually doesn't, whatever. I don't know, oh, actually, I didn't write, someone else, somebody wrote about some Malcolm X, so they can do their own research. But can someone read my Frank McCoppin and McKinley, please?
Sure.
Okay, Jeremiah, can you read that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Soon as I open it up. They give me a moment. School names research. All right. Frank McCoppin.
Yeah. So she put yes. And he was a racist, proposed anti-Chinese immigration and red rake on SF Board of Supervisors, first Irish mayor of SF 1867 to 69, and went on to become a senator.
Okay, great, so he meets criteria?
Yes.
Okay, any blocking concerns around that? Okay.
Jeremiah, I have a quick question. Lafayette, are we talking over the marquee, Lafayette? When we're talking about Lafayette, I'm not sure who, which, is that who we're talking about?
I have no idea at that school.
Okay.
That's why we put a question mark?
Yeah, yeah, I was just, yeah, I was just wondering if somebody knew if, if it was the, because I don't have the booklet that they're talking about, that's why.
The booklet does not say who it's named after, I was just reading that.
Okay, thank you so much.
McKinley Elementary?
To know them, this is, at the conclusion of the Spanish-American War in 1898, McKinley decided to annex the Philippines, but Filipino people expected to become independent as they'd fought with Spain, with Spain for their independence prior to the war, but McKinley thought the people, quote, unfit for self-government, end quote. He wanted to, quote, uplift and civilize and christianize them, end quote. So he waged a brutal war against the Filipino insurrection, tens of thousands of people died in combat, hundreds of thousands more died from diseases contracted in the concentration camps where the US held Filipino prisoners, so, yes.
Right, thank you, Mary.
Sure.
Malcolm X Academy? I would say no, any, any blocking concerns around that?
If we're applying our criteria, he has, in his autobiography, he was a pimp, and he claims to have been a pimp, and there's a recent autobiography, or a recent biography where they're questioning his, that section of his life as being a pimp and misogynist, misogynism, so, under our oppression of women, he would qualify as a yes.
Would qualify as a yes. Okay, I would, I would argue that, that that is not where he remained, and that is not why he's, the school was named for him?
I'm with you, completely, but as we apply our criteria, I think...
No, I think, I think it's a legitimate conversation.
Legitimate.
I think the, his, his position in most of his life, I would say, was about undoing that work and redressing that work. And he did his fair share of reparations around that work. And that would be my, that would be my explanation for that, why his name should remain.
Is that a criteria of ours now?
Is what a criteria of ours?
What you do with your life.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, that's why we have Malcolm X, that's why we honor him, right?
Yeah.
What he did with his life.
Yeah, and so I would say, yeah, I would say he restored, he worked to restore those, those dynamics, and so, like, any restorative process, like, we're, I think that's a, that's an appropriate, for his name to remain.
Yeah, but I, that's not, again, that's not in our guidelines, so I think using our guidelines and applying them, we need to have him as a yes.
Oh, interesting, I would, I would disagree with that. Because I think that's the whole point of restitution and restorative, the restorative nature of the work that he's done. Other committee members? Adam?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I would say that with him going to prison because of that, he paid for the, essentially for those sins. And you, he, as, when he was in jail, he became radicalized and also realized the error of his ways, but he paid for that. I think a lot of the other names that we are looking at had no, you know, like, had no shame or had no, or did not face any kind of jail time or any other kind of, kind of adverse reactions for their views, and also a lot of their actions of what they did in terms of shaping the United States.
Agreed.
Hi, I'm Matt.
Great, we are on...
Someone who did Malcolm X Academy, who, I didn't write that.
That was me, Mari.
Okay.
So we're in this...
So we're, we're in discussion now.
Thank you.
Yeah, I haven't read, I haven't read the recent biography, I read excerpts of it and interviews with the person who wrote it and was talking about the misogynism and that part of his life as being something that in the hagiography of Malcolm X has sort of been glossed over a bit and was glossed over in the biography, but that's his position as a writer, as a historian.
Interesting. Okay, any other, any other concerns? So Doug, I offered a blocking concern, or you offered a blocking concern? And then, so did we, did we satisfy your blocking concern?
Well, I don't know, can you show me in our guidelines where that is, where that's accounted for in our guidelines?
Where what's accounted for?
Where the, 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 you know, the discussion that we've had is he served, you know, he sort of served his times, or he changed, turned his life around, but we're seeking to change the names of schools named after those connected with, those who directly oppressed or abused women, and I don't think, he did that, that, if, if that's the case, right, then he belongs on our list.
So I would, I would say that he contributed to the upliftment of women significantly in the, in his work through the nation, right, and so there's a, so I would say that is what defines him and what the school is named, is why the school is named after, for that work. I don't think he can, I don't think he is considered as having contributed to the oppression of, of women is not this, is not how we view him. And so, and I think he, for that work that he did do, for that part of his life, he worked to restore and uplift women, specifically black women, in the United States.
So I found him an interesting comparison with George Washington.
How so?
George Wash, because George Washington fought and served the Congress, and he served the American people as a general to keep the Union together to fight for the principle, the Union, as president.
Thirteen colonies?
The Union being the thirteen colonies which wanted to split apart and...
Okay, that's different than the Union of like, the Union and the, like, I don't want to go to use our...
Not the Civil War, this is the Revolutionary War.
Okay, so, wait, to say, the keep together...
To keep us from being a colony of France or Spain or England, and he successfully led the war against the largest superpower at the time, England, a colonizer, and defeated them, and I think, you know, his, his service to the country, his service to those...
Here's the, wait, wait, here's the, here's the, here's the rub, and this, the very critical difference is the people who he harmed, right? He did not, which is the indigenous folks of this land who are named in our criteria, he did not make up to, he did not do any restorative work, he did not uplift them, he did not go back and redress that, he did not say, "I'm gonna fight for you" or "Make your treaties work" now in the way that they did it, where Malcolm specifically went out to uplift women, black women specifically, in the United States to, to their better selves or their godly selves, right, and so, there's the, so I think it's a very different, because the, it's a one-to-one harm, like, this is the whole point of restorative practices, right, so you restore where the harm is done, and so I think Malcolm did that work where George Washington did not.
Absolutely.
When he came in and was born as a, a British subject, under a king, that he uprose against, he did, that's not a sort of, I mean, he overcame his circumstance in life, right?
It's not, it's not overcoming circumstance, it's about redressing harm, right, and so this, so when people go into Malcolm X Academy, no one's like, "That harms me, that harms my psyche, that, you know, that, that's, that's, that's done, like, in that way." And so, I think it's, and again, it's about addressing where the harm is done, and so George Washington did not redress the harm done to indigenous people in any way, shape, or form, in fact, throughout his career and up to his death, he contributed to that, not to mention slavery, and so he's well deep in our criteria.
Absolutely, and Doug, I, I, when you say "we," who are you addressing as "we"? With George Washington?
The citizens of the United States.
Okay, so indigenous people in this country were not given citizenship up until the mid-fifties, so who are you calling and including as "we"?
Today, we have that, that freedoms that were represented in that document, the Declaration of Independence, have changed over time, and they have grown and been extended by the fight of many different individuals, and the argument of who should they be extended to was always an argument, I mean, since day one, there's always been an argument of who should be included. At day one, it wasn't everybody who lived here.
George Washington did it.
But everybody fought for that.
The indigenous people at all.
Absolutely, so, but I want, I want to go back to the distinction, Doug, because I think it's an important one, and why it's important that we leave Malcolm's name up versus George Washington's name up, and so, I'm not gonna belabor that point, I'm interested in hearing other committee members, if they have a differing opinion, or sort of get a fist of five of where people are with leaving Malcolm X's name where it is, or adding it to the list based on our criteria. And so, can I see a fist of five of where everyone is, five being, he should stay where he is, no, we're not taking the name down, one, I still want to discuss about it, blocking concerns, this should definitely come down.
So leave it.
Yes. Let's see what the committee has. Okay. We have one, 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 okay, with three, okay, so I think we're good, so it stays, and we have consensus around that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can move on. Marshall?
Okay, here we go, Marshall, so Marshall, I guess, this is very interesting, this definitely connects to, I guess, the whole gold rush, or whatever, here in California, or whatever, so he is, wait, someone just deleted my thing. Oh, I had like the note there, and it's not...
Just do undo.
Okay, I don't know, okay, there, so James Wilson Marshall is supposed to be the one who actually found gold, or whatever. He was a carpenter and operator at the, what's called the Sutter Sawmill, or whatever. Here's my thing where I want to talk about this more, is that, so...
No, go ahead, I'm not saying anything, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Even if, okay, so he, to me, this is very much like, I would put a question mark on this, I think we should definitely discuss it more, like, it's kind of like Paul Revere to me, so that even though he may have personally done, like, nothing, the myth and the whole gold rush and all this stuff, all that did, you know, I mean, we know, missionization...
The gold rush wasn't a myth, Mari, there was actual gold and people did rush it, that's not a myth.
But it came, it came at the expense of indigenous peoples here in California. It's a theft of land.
He didn't do that, he's just naming for finding that gold.
I understand, but I think it's, it's part of that celebratory of like, eh, you know what I'm saying? Theft of land, colonization, I would put a question mark, I would like to talk about it a little bit more, because I don't know we're going very fast, but I think we get to at least discuss it, we get to at least discuss it.
Okay, I don't know, we have much more to contribute than what we just had, but okay. Harvey Milk? Civil Rights Academy?
It's not meet criteria, of course not.
Maraloma?
I didn't do any research on that school, did anybody else do research on that school?
Did anyone do research on Maraloma?
I looked for stuff and I couldn't find anything on Maraloma, I mean, other than it just being, you know, a location name.
Okay, so it, it means actually like, a location.
Named after the neighborhood, that's all, I don't know what it means after, like, why would...
So there was some research done, we just didn't find anything?
Yes. Yeah, because otherwise it's basically just named after, you're a hill, you can, you...
Right.
Yeah, it's like seeing outlook, or you're looking out towards a hill thing, that's all.
Monroe?
Okay, this is easy, slave...
Wait, I'm sorry, I didn't get consensus, we had consensus there on no, on Maraloma? Okay, no blocking concerns, okay. Monroe?
Yes meets criteria, slave owner, imprisoned hundreds of slaves in Morel, Morel, Old Town, Virginia.
George Moscone?
He's the former mayor of San Francisco, he was assassinated, I don't think he meets criteria, but...
Okay, John Mayer?
Are we gonna go with urban renewal as a criteria of colonization?
No, urban renewal is not colonization.
So if we have, if we have Diane Feinstein on for the International House...
I don't think it was as development.
On for the Fillmore.
It's the International Hotel.
We don't have Diane Feinstein on, we don't have Diane Feinstein on at all, we have a question mark.
Then we should have a question mark with Moscone.
Okay.
Because it's the same criteria for why we would include them.
No, I think it was, for me, what I heard was around attacking seniors, not, not development.
You don't see urban renewal as a form of oppression?
No, not all the time, depends, can be weaponized, like many things, but depends on who's doing the weaponizing and all the rest. I wouldn't say George Moscone was doing the weaponizing at that time, as far as I know.
He supported Justin Herman and, you know, Herman worked for him and they, they worked together to get that right.
To, to get what?
To drive through the Fillmore project.
Okay. Give us some. I don't know. Okay, so that happened under his leadership. So you're saying yes, he meets our criteria?
If, if, yeah, I mean, if.
If you did the research, then.
I know, tell us yes or no.
Okay, so, so you're saying yes. Is there any, so you're saying he does meet criteria? So is there anybody who disagrees with Doug or has any block concerns around Moscone meeting criteria for his leadership of redevelopment of the Fillmore and, and at that time, because under his leadership? Mary?
All right. So, you know, we had this discussion about Diane Feinstein. And so Moscone, you know, I think he did a lot of advocacy for many neighborhoods and groups in the city. Um, you know, urban renewal is debatable. And again, Doug, if we talk about impacted groups, let's have that discussion. The people in the neighborhood that was impacted by his decisions, what did they say? What did they advocate? So, you know, I mean, to have a perception that urban renewal is a bad thing by your interpretation or your perception, or if you're using it as a balance of an argument here, then let's get more specifics on the people impacted by it.
Then we would be a no.
Thank you.
Are you saying no? Okay.
I do want to say one thing about him. He was working with Harvey Milk before he got assassinated or whatever. He was working on a humans rights legislation with Harvey Milk. Like they, you know what I'm saying?
So, so we're saying no?
Right.
I, I don't think.
I just wanted to, I just wondered where that fit with the, I want to, thank you for the discussion.
Thank you.
All right, John Muir?
Okay. So he has been quoted saying many racist things about Native Americans, calling native people savages. I don't know what happened. Oh, here we go. His direct quote, and he said this, "A strangely dirty and irregular life of these dark-eyed, dark-haired, half-happy savages lead in this clean wilderness." So he was for the wilderness just being for white colonial settlers and not for indigenous peoples living there. So he's an open racist.
Okay, so yes. Any blocking concerns around John Muir?
Also, I would say one thing too is Sierra Club, who I guess John Muir's founded or whatever. They recently came out and said like, hey, we realize that we have really racist roots as our organization and we think it's wrong. And they wrote a whole article about it. And so they actually came out public that John Muir is a racist and that he did, is responsible for theft of different native lands, because a lot of national parks are actually.
So are there any blocking concerns around John Muir? Seeing none. New traditions?
I didn't see anything. It's just saying new traditions, but I could be wrong. So anybody else find anything?
Jose Ortega?
I didn't get to research that one.
Did anyone research it?
Oh, wait, I did. My bad. I'm tripping. I'm reading the wrong one. Okay, here we go. So, um, Jose Ortega is a missionary. So in the spring of 1782, Ortega was on a colonizing another expedition. And he founded a mission. He founded, again, founded, so it sold unceded native land, right, in California. The Mission San Benaventura. And he also did the Presidio. Again, there's another reason why we took, said no to the word Presidio, of Santa Barbara. He was a colonizer, specific to the state. Does anybody want to add anything or not? I don't know.
Any blocking concerns around him being added to the list? All right. Hi, Eric. Welcome.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Hi. I, so I'm so sorry I'm late. I'm sorry I missed this discussion and I'm just gonna listen with appreciation.
Okay, Jean Parker?
I, I didn't find anything, but I also didn't look.
I did look for Jean Parker. I can't remember what the story was, but I didn't find anything. It's a fairly new name. So.
I can't even find Jean Parker in the book.
It's definitely there. Rosa Parks?
No.
Any consensus or any block concerns? Okay, Rosa Parks, JVP. Any block concerns? No. George Peabody? This is like the guy with the ballwinkle in Rocky, right? Sherman and Peabody?
He's supposed to be, I don't know, I didn't get to research, but on the book, it said that he is acknowledged to be the father of modern philanthropy.
Okay.
That's what they called him as.
So no. Any block concerns around that?
He gave a lot of money out.
Okay, seeing none. Reading Elementary?
Why don't you tell us? You're a teacher there. What does this school name mean?
It, it depends, it has, it's a question mark. Because there are multiple Readings throughout history and it was not clear which, which is which and who was for what. But they definitely worked, one definitely worked for the railroad for whom we believe it is named. And yeah, that's still, the research is still out on that.
So can one of the criteria be that you should know why your school is named that name? Like you should know who you're named after?
So that's where I stopped. Actually, that's actually where I stopped in my research.
Because if you don't know why, then maybe you need to.
I started, I started my research. That's where I, that's how far I got in the list. And then I, that's where I stopped. So I don't have anything to contribute for Reading right now, so.
Yeah, in the book, Reading didn't write anything.
Anybody? Did anyone else do any research around Reading? Doug, what did you find out?
Like you said, I didn't find a direct, any direct evidence of which Reading he was named after. Right? The Reading in California was a, a man of, of mixed successes, but I don't, nothing that I found would, would suggest having going there. I mean, you're a railroad man, you're, you're putting down railroad tracks. He might be if it is the railroad man, you, you could say that railroads were part of colonization.
Also, in, in terms of railroad and with the Chinese, there's that too.
Exploitation of Chinese labor?
But we don't know which Reading this is.
So but that's a significant difference, I think, about sourcing that. So I'm, I'm gonna put a question mark.
Reach out to the principal and be like, can you tell us?
He wouldn't know. He just got here. But.
Does no one know? Like no one?
I think, I think it's about going back. I think it's about taking the time. So what I was doing is I literally was going through every name, researching, looking at old board documents of when they named the school, looking at newspaper articles. I was doing pretty extensive research and, and I only got that far. So I did not complete that research. So I, I'm not comfortable saying yea or nay. I like Reading. We're a great, fantastic school. Promo. Reading's amazing. It's like family. But but the name Origins, I'm in the midst of researching, so I don't have anything to offer the committee.
The school book has it as Benjamin R. Reading.
Who was a railroad man?
Yeah.
Okay, so I say let's come back to that. Sanchez?
Jeremiah, just a time check, five minutes.
Okay.
Oh, we can. Very fast. So Sanchez, Sanchez is, again, here's another, this is another colonizer who basically is part of.
They call it, it meets our criteria.
Colonizer, California missions, blah, 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 blah. It's in the notes.
Okay. Any blocking concerns around Sanchez being on the list? Okay. San Francisco Public Montessori?
No, it's just saying what the school is.
Jay Sarah?
Yes, I think, do I have to say why or anybody? Because we are numerous.
Just say meets criteria. I think that's sufficient. We've heard numerous public comment and all the rest. Sheridan?
Okay, yes, meets criteria. Do I need to say why or do people really want me to?
Just one thing. What, what of our criteria does he, does he mean?
Which colonizer?
Okay, colonize, okay. Sherman?
He attacked the. Okay, Sherman, yes, meets criteria.
Okay, Commodore Slope. Oh, I'm sorry. What, what does, so sorry, let's go back. I'm not gonna brush. We don't have to brush.
He brought the same colonization military philosophy to the West where he shaped a policy and strategy that would finally subjugate all native nations.
So do we have consensus around Jay Sarah, Sheridan and Sherman? Any blocking concerns around that? I don't want us to skip over our process because we have a short amount of time. Commodore Slope Elementary?
Claimed stole California from Mexico, colonizer.
Spring Valley?
That's just describing like a land base, not.
Robert Louis Stevenson?
So he wrote a poem called Foreign Children. And he describes, and he starts beginning it as the frosty little Eskimo or Jasper, basically, it's, it's a really, really messed up racist poem that he handwritten. And this is quoted, this was looked at by American Indian children's literary critic, Dr. Debbie Reese. So she says that Stevenson's collection, by the way, have more than one poem that is racist in the word and or how the illustrator depicted the Indian in it. He wrote, literally wrote a racist poem. Foreign children. You can read it. His own words.
Okay. So any block concerns around Robert Louis Stevenson? Can't see none. Okay, Sunnyside?
Just describing the neighborhood. No.
I'm sorry. It's a lie. It's a lie. It's not sunny over there. Sunset Elementary?
In the neighborhood again.
Yeah, you never see the sunset.
Right, exactly. It's a lie. Sutro.
Okay, do you want me to read about Sutro or no?
No, just, doesn't meet criteria.
Yes, it does.
Okay. What criteria?
So.
Just the criteria, please.
Okay, so the person who's named after Adolf Sutro. So John Harris, who was a 38 African, African American, sued Adolf Sutro, who basically owned the Sutro Bats and also happened to be mayor of San Francisco. And he sued him under, based under racial discrimination, under the Double Civil Rights Act. It was California's pioneer civil rights law.
Thank you.
And he won, I just want to say, and he won back then. That's huge. As a black man, won back then with the civil rights case.
Okay, so.
History says that.
Any blocking concerns around Sutro? Okay, seeing none. Edward Robinson E.R. Taylor?
I have to put a question mark unless someone else did research, because I did not.
I did research. I think he's, I think he's like, he was a educator there. I think it's a, it's a recent name. But I don't recall, I don't recall solidly enough to say, yeah.
Put a question mark then, unless somebody else.
Tenderloin?
Make the pasta, you make the pasta.
This is what I wrote. Okay, talk about it.
Doesn't meet criteria. It sounds like a neighborhood. Doesn't meet.
Can I just read what I wrote?
Not if you're gonna hate on a neighborhood.
You told us to do research.
I did, I did, I did. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Sorry. Committee members, can enough of us commit to continue the meeting that we need to stop now? Can I just see a quick fist of five? Five continue. One, I gotta go.
We can continue at another time. I mean, I, I'm good either way.
How many more we got to go?
Looks like we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
No.
We have a lot. So, okay. So let's, let's respect our time and everyone else's time. I'm going to recess the meeting again because we're still on the same agenda item. And so we'll take a, we'll take a short two-week recess. And so the, when we take a recess, it may push our timelines back, but we'll talk about that at the end of our process, because of when we inform schools and when they can start their process. So we're gonna take a short recess now. A short two-week recess until our next meeting. Do, can I get a second on that?
A second?
A second.
Any objections? Okay, seeing none. Then I'm gonna, I'm gonna recess our meeting. Chris, thank you for taking notes and being our tech guy. Everyone for doing all the research, all the educators and people who contributed, members of the public who came on. So that means also at our next meeting, sorry, well, we can discuss the committee. There wouldn't be public comment, but as a committee, we can decide to open it up if we choose to for at least 15 minutes to allow the public who wants to speak, because this, this has gone on a few recesses that we do, we don't want to deny the public a chance to, to speak, but we do really want to encourage people to go ahead and send your letters, use our website, look at our minutes and send, and send in requests and things like that. All right? So thank you, everyone, for making the time to come. We will see you in two weeks.
We're not gonna do appreciation?
Yeah, I just did my appreciations, but you can go ahead and do appreciations. We are. Go ahead.
I just want to appreciate everyone for like, you know, doing this. Like, we're all volunteering and just bringing up everything and looking at the good, bad, ugly, good, whatever, everything. I appreciate, I've learned a lot through this process about how we name our school names and what they're named after and knowing stuff even about my own neighborhood, like Bryant Street, you know? So thank you all.
And, yeah, and I do want to appreciate all the pushback and conversation. It's definitely interesting and fun. And, but I really do appreciate all the research and work. So many people who've contributed to the research that educators taking time out of their, their summers and and the committee members. So thank you all. See y'all in two weeks. Meeting is recessed. Until then.